So, good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order. This is Tuesday, March 22nd at 9:00 AM. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the Board Liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org, under People, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
So would you please call the role?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Garius Anderson. Amy Costa. Joshua Elizondo. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar-Curio. Jelena Grande.
Present.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Irma Oakwin.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Roy Shabazian.
Here.
Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Julia Tarasova.
Present.
Los Villa Lobos. And Joseph Williams.
Here.
We have Coram President Haynes.
Thank you. Valerie, I'm glad that you're feeling better today. I know you were not. You were under the weather yesterday, but glad to have you here. With that, I'm going to
Thank you, thank you.
You're more than welcome, darling. So with that, I'm going to ask, who am I going to ask to do the pledge? There's so many folks to choose from. I'm going to, I'm going to put Bill Rawlings on the spot to do our pledge, Bill.
You bet. In acknowledgement that our more perfect union remains imperfect, please join me in the pledge. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I'm going to, so you said it perfectly, every single word. Now, if I were asked to do it, I would, I would be part of that imperfect union. But what I would ask staff is to, would you make certain that you put the pledge words in our binders for every meeting? So for those of us who may not have it perfectly, we can refer to it. And that would, I think that would be helpful. And, and then I would not feel like I'm putting somebody on the spot to say it out loud, as I would be one of those people that would mess it up. Okay, so with that, I am going to give my report, and then I'm going to ask our, our president to give her report. My report is, is this. I'm quite excited about the study session that we're getting ready to go into. And I wanted to, to tell you, to tell you what my reasoning is. We've talked about the, what distinguishes Calbright in its work. It's actually, it's, for me, it's, it's, it's very exciting work because part of what our study session is going to be about, it's about how do we involve those folks who are not usually at the table. We call them minoritized. We call them folks of color. They're not usually at the table. And usually when they are, they're an afterthought. Usually when they are, they're, they come in in the middle of the process. And, and, and in some cases, they come in because it's sort of politically correct to do so. But when they come in, because we understand that their voice is critically important to the work we're doing and to what we want to see, and they are involved at the very beginning of a process, it makes for the process to be real, legitimate, because their voice is real and legitimate. And they have something to say about the process that we need to listen to. So having these communities, our communities, come in and have direct voice in how solutions will be addressed at the very beginning of the process, not early, not sort of as an afterthought, is what we are planning to do here at Calbright. It is, it is something that, when I have been involved in the community work that I have done in the past, has been critically important. And it has, and, and it is, and it is these groups that have to have ownership of what the work is, because we're supposed to be addressing issues and challenges and, and strategies that make sense to them. So, and it, and in that, and in that respect, it has to be intentional. So, again, I'm delighted that we're going to have this study session in a few minutes. And I look forward to the conversations that we have, not only during this process, not only during this process this morning, but as this unfolds at Calbright. So with that, I conclude my remarks, and then would CEO Minion give her president's report?
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa in absentia, and members of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin by first actually sharing my congratulations to President Haynes and Trustees Grandes and Rawlings for their reappointment to the California Community Colleges Board of Governors. We are thrilled to have them back as well on the Calbright Board and wish them the best of luck and also so appreciative of our continued partnership in the years ahead. And speaking of looking forward, this morning, I am pleased to share with you that Calbright's progress continues. As a part of our continued growth and expansion of operational capacity, we are bringing forward six positions for your approval. This includes a new role in human resources, an enrollment services manager, and three positions on our growing technology team, which makes possible the learning platforms, the systems, and the interfaces that support our students. In addition to these six positions, we're also seeking approval for seven candidates to join the Calbright team or to move up when the, within the organization after stellar work. Looking at this group of accomplished individuals, the resounding theme is one of student success and support. What we're building, as you know, requires teamwork and synergy across the institution as all of the pieces kind of come together to play in a symphony. We are bolstering our workforce development team to expand relationships with industry employers and economic development entities. And if approved, two new student support specialists will join the college to provide the kind of human-powered support that we need that's underlying our high-quality online educational experiences. In addition, I am also very excited to present a Vice President of Learning and Instruction. This is a very critical position at Calbright, and the title speaks not only to the importance of curriculum and academics, but really to our student-centered approach to learning and design. The candidate for this role brings with her extensive experience in online, in competency-based education, in strong and strong theory design and practice in teaching, learning, and assessment. But perhaps the even more exceptional thing is her experience in actually galvanizing individuals around the needs of students in the practice of CBE teaching and learning. You know, one of the things I wanted to share about her in particular is when I spoke to her references, the big theme that emerged, what they each highlighted was her deep engagement with faculty and staff and her collective collaborative mindset, her remarkable ability to lead, to develop, to support a team, which is not just vital in higher education and systems of participatory governance, but it's really critical to the way that we must collaborate in our week, in our work to meet our unique mission as a college. I'm very excited about the growth of our leadership team and the diverse knowledge and skills and experiences they're bringing to the table that is both essential for our long-term success, but also are able to make an immediate impact and support of our current students and systems. When the board first appointed me as President and CEO of Calbright, one of the early tasks, as you know, that we took on was to take and develop and set a strategic vision with key aggressive but achievable goals to really guide our work. And armed with this direction, we started to dig into Calbright's growth strategy, especially as a part of our accreditation process. And we set out to map our near and long-term path. One of those goals was a student body of 1,000 students by the end of March 2022. And I am very pleased to share with you that we have reached that goal. But perhaps beyond even reaching that numerical goal, what was really significant is that we did it honoring the core objectives of our college in who we serve. Ninety-two percent of our students are 25 years of older, and their median age is nearly 40. It's in the late 30s. Eighty percent identify as BIPOC, including 23% who are Black or African-American. Thirty percent, one in three, are caregivers, parents or caregivers. Forty percent of our students are unemployed. Thirty percent are displaced workers, and roughly half are working in some form or fashion. This news is a product of the team's hard work and dedication, but I want to point out that it actually also points to something bigger. Earlier this month, I attended the American Council on Education Conference and participated in the closing plenary alongside Chancellor Oakley and the President of Western Governors University. And a common theme throughout that conversation was the challenging circumstances that colleges and universities are finding themselves in today. That, the sentiment that I shared reflected this unbelievable reality that this is the first economic recession in memory in which students haven't returned to higher education. They haven't turned to higher education in face of the economic challenges. I raised my perspective that this moment requires that we listen to what students are telling us about how they are experiencing higher education, as well as how they are experiencing the employment market, in their words and in their actions, and to move forward with the creativity and the self-reflection that the moment demands. The reality of nationwide declining enrollments isn't going to fix itself as the pandemic wanes. And the numbers tell us that the students most likely not to enroll or to drop out in the last two years are the exact same students that Calbright was created to serve, non-traditional adult learners, parents and caregivers, and those who are falling through the cracks of our economy and traditional education systems. These students are leaving higher education because we have not solved the complex equation for how best to serve and support them, which is fundamental to our mission at Calbright and the value that we bring to the community college system. And they are telling us that what they need, unsurprising to many of you in this room, is the flexibility, the flexibility to learn while also working and to learn while raising their family. We can't go back, but early indicators suggest that Calbright is on the right path forward and that our future is promising. Since July, our enrollment has more than doubled, as I shared, and 90% of our students shared with us that they're on, that the online model, in the way that we were doing it, made that program accessible, while 78% cited the extreme workforce focus in our training programs as a leading reason they enrolled. Building on the lessons we've learned and our vision for the future, I will join Michael Younger, Calbright's new VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, in a few minutes for a presentation study session about our equity-centered community design. This will provide an opportunity for us to share a little bit about the thought process that serves as the framework for our planning, but also to engage in a dialogue about the challenges we are working to address through our design. I look forward to many more study sessions of this kind, which can serve as guideposts as we continue to move forward and to bring this work to life, and also to share updates on our work in the months ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Minion. So we are about to now move into our board study session. And again, it's regarding the topic of workforce strategies, equity-centered community design. And I encourage all of you to participate in this discussion. We will, and as has already been noted, Michael Younger will be presenting. So there is a special join. This should take, am I correct? Is, is this going to be about an hour, or is it going to be closer to an hour and a half?
You will tell us, but we have about kind of 30 minutes of a walkthrough presentation, and then the rest of the time, as we can go in as far as an hour and a half in terms of the time, we have a lot on the agenda. But really, we're hoping that the conversation will guide us.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. So you can begin anytime now, then.
Okay, I think we, do I have Michael?
I think I saw him.
Yes, I'm on.
Great. So I am very excited to be joined by Michael Younger, which I mentioned is our Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation. That's about discussing and having a discussion session on the evolution of Calbright's workforce strategy. Part of this conversation is really a continuation of the Calbright story that we highlighted in the Board of Trustees' approved strategic vision for the college. And if you remember, when we, the board approved the strategy, it was a strategic vision. It was a thoughtful way to tell Calbright's story and to highlight a set of ambitious, measurable, but achievable goals to mark our progress as a college against our mission. It also helped explain to others the great need for the college, particularly in the context of ongoing challenges that are facing too many Californians displaced in our economy in the wake of the pandemic and what has proven to be a very complicated economic recovery. As we worked to operationalize the strategy since last year, our focus turned not just to why we were doing our work, but really how we were doing it, and how we will need to operationalize our college to meet the long-term and changing needs of those we serve. You know, expressly, how do we need to develop our organizational development and our implementation strategies and activities to ensure we're positioned for success against our vision? And the deeper we got into understanding the needs of the communities we serve, the realities of the regional economies that they lived and worked in, the more we knew that we needed to address equity by design, not by anecdote, not by afterthought. And so the way we focus our strategy acknowledges that equity doesn't happen by chance, but with intention, with focus, with diligence, and frankly, with a lot of data. So all of our efforts moving forward will be deeply rooted in a new model for community and economic engagement in problem-solving and really in creating those inclusive and equitable outcomes that has come to be known as equity-centered community design. There's something missing from most conversations that I hear in education that, because they carry an institutional lens primarily. The conversations very quickly become very narrowly focused on merely tweaking the systems that we have, even when we know they fail particular communities. So instead, especially as we confront the moment that we're in, we need to think about how we can manifest the kinds of systems that we need. When we break it down, at the heart of that disconnect is really a gap that we see in understanding and empathy for our learner of how she is actually experiencing the education market and the employment market. And if we're, if we can succeed in keeping her at the center of our action, we can set up this institution to possess the creativity and the flexibility that allows us to respond to the needs of our communities today, but maybe more importantly, as they evolve in the decades down the road. With almost every breath I draw these days, some of you will find this unsurprising, I find myself continually having to explain very basic realities that our students are facing. The way that traditional education and employment has, in most cases, potentially not worked for them to create accessible opportunities for them to progress, how the deck is stacked against their progress and thwarting possibilities. To explain all of this, we have to create some focused identity for our students. And in that spirit, as we dive deeper, we'd like to introduce you to Brenda. Next slide. Brenda is a single mom of two school-aged children. Brenda doesn't have a car, so her family has to take the bus everywhere. She dropped out of her program at Fresno College years ago because the commute became unmanageable. So she currently works as a part-time, at part-time at a restaurant, but her hours aren't regular. But at least her job was, her boss promised her 25 hours per week to make sure that she has some of the income that she needs. Recently, her mom got very sick, and so she has a second job at a grocery store to try and help out with the medical bills. Even though sometimes she's free during the day, the grocery store only schedules her at night because this is the only way she can avoid a scheduling conflict with another job. This is a day in her life. At 6:00 AM, she wakes up. She makes breakfast for her kids. She heads out the door. She'll wait because her, she'll, she'll prepare them because her sister will walk them to school in another couple of hours. At 6:30, Brenda takes the bus to work at the diner that she works at, and it takes her an hour to get there. At 7:30, she starts her first job at a restaurant. She's on her feet all day. She's dealing with customers. She's communicating with the kitchen. She's working a point-of-sale system. She's cleaning up tables and bathrooms. She even does some inventory management work. So she's entering information into an Excel spreadsheet where she and other staff keep track of when supplies are running low. At 3:30 PM, she clocks out and she takes the bus home. Her sister has temporarily agreed to watch the kids so that Brenda can take on that second shift, but that meant that her sister had to move her entire work schedule around as well. At 4:00 PM, Brenda and her sister prep for an early dinner for the family. At 5:00 PM, Brenda takes dinner on the bus to her second job. At 6:00 PM, she reports on duty to her second job at the grocery store. She works with the store's inventory control system. She stocks shelves. She does quality assurance, assurance to make sure products are fresh and they're stocked in the right place. And she also has to assist with customer questions. All the way at 10:00 PM, Brenda clocks out. Lately, she hasn't felt safe taking the bus home at night anymore because of a scary situation a few months ago. So she often asks her ex to do her a favor and drive her home. At 10:30 PM, Brenda finally walks in the door. She checks on the kids who are already fast asleep. And at 11:00 PM, she climbs into bed. She mentally prepares for the next day, and finally, she's able to fall asleep. That was a snapshot of one day, but every day is like that, sometimes even Saturdays and Sundays. Brenda's life is a one-long string of going, going, going with very little margin of error. No two days are the same. Because of her and her sister's constantly changing work schedules, their days are very unpredictable. They can't plan. They just go 24 hours at a time. Brenda has basically no free time. She once tried taking an online course from a local college in Fresno and doing the coursework on the bus, but it didn't work. She couldn't always get a seat. It was hard to focus with so many people around her. And sometimes she couldn't get iffy, the Wi-Fi was iffy. So nowadays, she doesn't really even glance at college advertisements or think about going to college anymore. She already, already knows that it would mean to cutting into work hours or sleeping hours, and she really can't afford to do either. She's surviving on the edge. Most colleges would like Brenda to somehow find the time, but there's literally no time. Even if colleges were free, she can't magically warp time. There are bills to pay, and her body can't live on any less sleep than she's getting, or she'll break. But hope, hope is a really tough flame to put out. There must be something she's overlooking, right? Her mind keeps going around and round it in circles, but even some of the short programs feel too long. Sometimes the short programs are eight months. When she envisions what eight months of slightly reduced sleep or slightly reduced paycheck would do to her family, she shakes her head. They've never had the freedom to plan for an entire month, let alone eight. But let's say she goes for it anyway. Who's to say the job prospects are even good on the other side? Do colleges really even check this stuff? And how deep do they go? Brenda recalls that her sister was sold a program in a high-growth field, only to find out the field was small. That's not a risk she can take. Brenda closes her eyes and realizes that she's being asked to change herself and her life circumstances, just so she can change herself in her life circumstances. And it, it doesn't add up. It's a catch-22. She shakes her head again because rather than trying to change Brenda, how do we change college to work for her? Brenda's situation feels almost impossible, certainly from her perspective. But we must stop to consider that Brenda has more advantages than many of the people for whom Calbright was established. Who are they? Next slide. Our founding legislation gets right to the point, and it's right in the first paragraph. "We exist for the 2.5 million Californians aged 25 to 34, with some college or no college at all." Many of you remember, when California Compete did the study on this group of learners when the college was first founded, the percentages on the slider from that report, based on Census Bureau data, in particular, the five-year estimates for Californians aged 25 to 34. This working adult learner is who we are founded to serve. We are here to move, we aren't here to move Brenda or anyone from one low-quality job to a low-paying job landscape in another market, no matter how in-demand it might be. After all, paying workers as little possible will always be in-demand. It's always fashionable. It's the nature of the US political economy. We're here for Brenda, not for the economists, not for the Fortune 500, but for Brenda. We look at the job landscape through her eyes and not anyone else's, because for Calbright, that is what it means to be student-centered, a student-centered college. It is fundamentally equity-centered. So how would Brenda go about things? For starters, she'd narrow down occupations until she'd figured out her best bet, and only then would she go looking for a program that leads to it, and not the other way around. She's seen enough people pick the program first and look at the occupation later, and then come up empty-handed. Growth rate of the occupation is somewhat irrelevant to her unless it's going to cause job availability, a job availability problem during her working lifetime. From Brenda's point of view, an occupation can even have a flat or, in some cases, declining growth rate, as long as the pool of job openings is still plentiful in 40 years' time. The main thing for Brenda isn't growth. The main thing is the sheer size of the job openings pool. Brenda doesn't want to hear about industries. She's not applying to an industry. She's applying to a job. From her perspective, occupations that show up in a lot of different industries are good, and occupations that don't are less good. It's simple. Why subject herself to booms and busts, to automation risk, to wage compression? That's pretty much all she has to say about industries. So yes, Brenda has a point of view. So how does her point of view play out? Next slide. We've shown you who Brenda is. She's our archetype learner that we're designing for, the reason that all of us are in this virtual room. We've kind of given you a picture of how we at Calbright build and nurture and hold deep empathy for that human being. And we've given you an idea of just how deep into their personal life stories and personal needs we are willing to go to truly understand and see the world as they do. Now, the good news is that we have a plan for helping Brenda. We have a plan for strategically addressing her needs. But before we get into it, we need to make everyone aware of two big intellectual concepts that have come into sphere, our sphere of thinking, particularly in the last six to 12 months, as everything has changed around us. The first is the knowledge economy, and the second is equity-centered community design. In the main, in the knowledge economy, the main thing to know about this one is that it required us to shift from thinking about the economy in terms of production to thinking about the economy in terms of innovation. The main thing to know about equity-centered community design, about this practice, is that it required us to shift our thinking from a design path, a design process and a method that is diehard student-centered to one that is actually equity-centered. And that, these are not the same thing. So why are these two big concepts on our mind? What does it have to do with anything? As we all know, the pandemic wasn't as the worst pandemic in history. We all spent 2020 reeling. And those of us who had, who were lucky, we spent 2021 really reflecting and questioning. And during that time, we took a deeper look at two concepts that had always been interesting, but now essential, that the world has changed. This concept, these concepts do now, now do more than interest us. They become a key ingredient to our unique institutional point of view as a college. We're going to give you a one-side primer on each of these concepts right now before we go any further, because in order to understand our plan for Brenda, you'll need to have working knowledge of the two concepts. Next slide. The knowledge economy is focused on the essential importance of human capital in the 21st century economy. It's the rapid expansion of knowledge and the increasing reliance on computerization, big data analytics, and automation that are changing the economy of the developed world to no one, to one that is more dependent on intellectual capital and skills and less dependent on the production process. That idea of the knowledge economy is not new, but the way that our economy now relies on knowledge and skills, data analysis, performance, and strategic management is amplified. It's characterized by a higher percentage of highly skilled employees whose jobs require special knowledge or their skills. That is unlike in the past when the economy depended heavily on either unskilled labor or consisted primarily of producing physical goods. The modern economy consists of services, industries, and jobs that require thinking and analysis of data. This modern economy This modern economy, we all so call it the post-industrial economy, the information economy. It's a reference to the central importance of information technology in the economies of developed nations. So the stakes for both Brenda and institutions of higher education in this kind of a setting are very high. Society is changing rapidly and these changes don't simply suggest new modifications to learning, they require it. The standardized approach to learning that has been the norm so long is being disrupted, not because it's a bad model, but because it doesn't accommodate the needs of adult learners like Brenda. A much more student-centric equity-based model has to emerge. One that understands the workers of tomorrow, that they need the ability to be agile, adaptable to change, good communicators, problem solvers and team players. And that evidence is all around us about the knowledge economy. You can see the growth and impact of the knowledge economy in virtually any sector of the economy that you look at. For example, it's in the effect on traditional manufacturing, such as in the automotive industry. Where we can see an increasing reliance on automation, the use of just-in-time inventory management systems and the push to develop driverless cars. In the healthcare industry, we see it as both a key contributor to the knowledge economy and a primary beneficiary of it. More rapid in research development of new medicines, increased use of robotic surgical aids and three D. And the explosion of telemedicine services and changes in the delivery model are all a reflection of the change we see in the knowledge economy. The information and communications technology industry, which is focused on communication services and information technology on the information infrastructure itself is also a prime example of this. The ICT industry aims to increase the efficient use of information by connecting data storage facilities such as computer servers with the means of transmitting information such as cell phones. So why do we care about all of this? It's because we know that Brenda has to be positioned with a foothold in in it that gives her the greatest range of motion. Because her future learning and career growth cannot just be linear. But it has to be reflective of and responsive to the matrix opportunities that exist in the employment marketplace. And it turned to the next slide and turn things over to Michael.
Appreciate it. So equity-centered community design is really the next level of student-centered design. Antoinette Carroll pioneered equity-centered community design at her practice at Creative Reaction Lab. And they were one of the first to evolve standard design and innovation to a more humane discipline. Where equity is at the center. Notice that equity is a concept, an outcome, not an actual human being or group. In equity-centered community design, those who have traditionally been de-centered serve as equity advisors or guides in the design process. Advising the other co-creators and collaborators at the table who have far less direct experience within equity on how to think about things, what realities to consider and what colored lenses to look through when pinpointing the root problem. They also bring more authenticity into the research because of their close ties with traditionally de-centered communities. One way to think about equity-centered community design is that it changed design from human-centered to humanity-centered. Our research efforts around workplace success is a demonstrable example of equity-centered community design. Because we are bringing design and research into our process and including worker voice at every stage. Our focus and action have to embrace a collaborative, co-created approach that engages and leverages community-led expertise from researchers, community-based and worker organizations, economic and workforce development partners, industry and employers. It's integrative, not siloed. It's responsive, not reactionary. It's intentional, not conventional. So Calbright has to build towards different capabilities. It has to breathe, move and think and decide differently. We have to recognize the relative position of our focused communities and the ways they like Brenda, experience the education market and the job market as well. Next slide. Thinking through the various toggles on the screen will theoretically click and filter a hundred percent through Brenda's eyes. This is what co-creation of a college experience truly means. Her needs, her desires, her preferences and her ability to identify for herself what is right and good for her. This is a core tenet of equity-centered community design. So how does equity-centered community design actually work at Calbright? For starters, we asked Brenda to be our equity advisor, our guide from the very beginning of program selection. What does that mean? It means we run everything through Brenda's filter. Would she actually do that job? Would she actually want that occupation? Would she actually apply for that opening? And is she actually interested in the slightest in the kind of work and job tasks being done here? We get inside her brain and filter things out. Just as we've learned Brenda would. Here's what that looks like in practice. She'd want to start her search with the occupations with the most amount of openings. Filtering out jobs that have credential and formal education requirements and jobs with median pay below thirty-two thousand and not offering on-the-job training. Filtering out jobs that are solely an apprenticeship because the commitment seems risky at this point in her life. Or even jobs requiring physical labor because she often worries about health impacts. She even filters out manager and supervisor jobs at this point because although she looks forward to managing one day, she doesn't feel that she's quite ready yet. Next slide. Digital transformation has really changed the way these traditional roles have been performed. New skills are required to be successful and familiarity with technology is important. Anybody can chase high growth and wage gains. However, Calbright has to account for it when thinking about the population we serve. So Brenda looks at the resulting lists of jobs that will be available through twenty twenty-eight. And her reaction is, quote, "That's nearly forty thousand jobs just around Fresno. And most of these look like desk jobs with stable hours. Most of these look like they could be salary as opposed to hourly tips and commissions." So you'll notice Brenda is starting to think about quality markers which unfortunately are not data fields in resources like the US Bureau of Labor Statistics database or California EDD's Labor Market Information Projection Tools. Isn't that ironic? Because they're surely top of mind for regular people like Brenda. She looks even closer at job titles. She reads the job task. Her next thought is, quote, "Most of these seem like variations on the same thing. I can do this. Now I'll look for programs that lead to these type of jobs." Brenda's right. Most of these occupations are similar. They represent the very first wrong, the very first step across the chasm and to the knowledge economy. They're digital. They use a computer. They are the first step into the knowledge economy. Next slide. So one way to think about Brenda's narrowed-down list of office clerk-type occupations is that these type of jobs would get Brenda not only out of retail, but get her safely to a more, to more stability where the jobs are less susceptible to automation and industry loans. And less susceptible to skills that are not transferable. This is where Brenda would like to be. She has an inkling that these entry-level office clerk-type occupations that don't necessarily have any credential requirement are the secret entryway into the knowledge economy. We used to think industry certification would suffice. Now we believe transferable skills along with certification and credentialing is the true opportunity for future career growth. So if Brenda's narrowed-down list of occupations involves such similar skills, all skills tangentially related to the knowledge economy, working with digital computer power, could there be one competency model or educational offering that fits well with many, most, or even all of those entry-level knowledge economy occupations? If so, it would short-reduce Brenda's program selection risk. You know, the risk you pick the wrong program and end up qualified for far fewer job openings than you had hoped for. Remember, Brenda's goal is to be qualified for as many high-quality job openings as possible. Because it's like fishing in a stock pond, much better odds. Slide, next slide. Brenda is not the only one who noticed that these same sorts of skills keep popping up and seem to be more and more relevant in the workplace of today and the workplace of tomorrow. Building on its prior work, the business and higher education forum commissioned Burning Glass Technologies to examine new skills in the job market of the digital economy. Analyzing roughly fifty-six million resumes and more than a hundred and fifty million unique US job postings. This is the first time the universe of skills has been analyzed in order to better understand the most valuable combination of skills for the digital economy. One of the key learnings from this study is that job seekers and incumbent employees possessing a diversity of new foundational skills experienced increased job mobility. So what you see on this graphic in this slide is a combination, is that a combination of skills are required to successfully compete in today's economy. Human skills like communication, digital skills like analyzing data, business skills like project management are all necessary ingredients to progress. Others have seen the same thing, like Burning Glass Institute and Harvard and their emerging degree reset study. Or the World Economic Forum and their twenty twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty twenty jobs resets summit article. All highlighting this growing relevance and importance of skills-based training. So Brenda sees it, we see it, and the world sees it too. The knowledge economy is where we are going. The knowledge economy is where most of us in this virtual room already are. Slide, next slide. So our research indicates that entry-level data analysis skills are not only transferable from job to job, but also across industries. Employers know that workers with transferable skills have an extensive skill set they can tap into when needed. Brenda's mind starts racing. She feels like she's on to something. Eighteen thousand jobs currently available across California and thousands available in Fresno right now. With average annual salaries of thirty-seven thousand, far greater than the twenty-five thousand she's making working odd hours at the restaurant and grocery store. And stable jobs, meaning there are a number of openings now. And there were projected to still be a number of openings many years from now. It feels safe in the sense of a safe bet. It feels like risk mitigation and opportunity grabbing all wrapped up into one. She starts thinking about all the different jobs she might be able to get. She realizes that they are all over the place in all different types of industries and sectors. Because all industries and sectors need this type of work. Brenda's perspective is so valuable because it allows us to reinforce the knowledge economy access point she envisioned. Next slide. The four skills highlighted on the right are just a small sample of the sorts of skills an entry-level worker in the knowledge economy would need to rely. They are somewhat obvious when you think about them because they are skills you and I use every day. These skills are very common across the knowledge economy. And here's a bit of foreshadow. There's a way to apply rigor and structure to skills like these and others like them. There's a way to form a thoughtful, rigorous program offering around skills like this. You'll see what I mean in the next few slides. Next slide. Then Brenda's mind really starts racing. She could even imagine a career path coming up out of this. If she could get her foot in the door of the knowledge economy, get on salary, work really hard, learn as much as she could, could it keep going? But why state civil service? Well, why not? This is not closing the door on private sector where we see opportunities to partner and co-create, some of which we are currently pursuing as we speak. But again, it's Brenda, our equity advisor, that pointed us in this direction. She thinks a lot about job quality markers, things like stable hours, Monday through Friday work weeks, healthcare benefits for her kids and herself. A pension that'll build wealth. And also generational wealth. And an equitable promotion path that she can count on. One that is made transparent to her and everyone else based on measurable things like experience and tenure. Again, these are data fields in most labor market information tools. These are just the obvious human desires that real people want to think about, want and think about. So state civil service has a lot of these job quality markers that Brenda thinks about all the time. Maybe even all of them. And it turns out the biggest employer in the state is the state. And local and municipal governments and agencies share a lot of the same traits. And it just so happens that Calbright is also a public employer. So we have a lot of meaningful connections and understandings of these public employment environments and systems. Some of us, like myself, even come from there. So when it comes to the spread of the knowledge economy, state and local governments are no exception. All organizations, public and private, are riding the wave of digital transformation and social transformation together. Strategic partnership becomes essential here. When we think about piloting a new pathway, we can't just launch things on the market. This was a significant lesson learned from the early days of this college. So the question isn't, can Brenda move laterally into the entry-level knowledge economy job? The question is, will the system let her? To be honest, we aren't sure. So we've decided to make it our job to ferry her across the chasm with the educational programs, knowledge economy, learning content, services, supports and overall college design that puts racial equity and economic justice right at the center. That's equity-centered community design. Next slide. So in order to construct near-term and future programs in this coordinated, cohesive and seamless way, we have to be powered differently. The engine that powers us as an institution, our bank, so to speak, will be this idea of introducing a competency model, which today is conceptual. We would like to call it the Calbright Skills Engine. Next slide. So what's a competency model? Unlike a curriculum model, a competency model is a collection of competencies and performance indicators that together define successful performance in a particular work setting. Competency models are the foundation for important workplace functions because they specifically define what is essential to select as well as train and develop a diverse and talented future workforce. The foundation for the Calbright Skills Engine was inspired by the entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial competency model created by the Department of Labor in partnership with the Consortium of Entrepreneurial Education. The entrepreneurial competency model identifies personal, academic, general workplace and entrepreneurial competencies. But why are we using an entrepreneurial competency model as the base for our skills engine? Well, because our central thesis, as we analyze the needed skills and future demand, is that entrepreneurship education is the foundation of a knowledge economy. Even for those who have no desire or intention to become business owners. In the knowledge economy, everyone may not be a business owner, but everyone must be entrepreneurial. In that knowledge economy, entrepreneurialism has increasingly become price, the price of entry. Notice that occupational job pools we're talking about and the job quality markers Brenda is thinking about. And the state and local government employment partners and civil service career trajectories we're talking about. They all seem to pull from a common skills engine, if you will. A skills engine where all competencies have an internal logic and mutual coherence that aligns to the knowledge economy. You can see the, you can see that this model builds from the basic fundamentals to more industry and career-specific competencies. It's made up of tiers increasing in specificity and specialization as the pyramid ascends. Each tier is divided into blocks representing content or skills and knowledge and abilities and other factors that are essential to successful workplace performance. Of, of course, not all competencies are required for all jobs. A learner isn't necessarily required to obtain every single competency on the lower tiers in order to be able to cognitively acquire the competencies in the upper tiers. We all know well the story of the worker who has successfully acquired the tier four technical skills but still lacks the tier one personal effectiveness skills that could unlock bigger and better opportunities. This model flips things by making business skill development be the technical skill development and vice versa. What we're saying simply is the very nature of the US economy is centered around the language of business. And the very nature of business in the US is in fact quite technical. Therefore, we are going to treat it as a career and technical education accordingly. In this digital age, everyone is in business. The first four tiers of this model address this in broad-based fundamental way. The fifth tier is where we customize for different disciplinary focus areas or occupational clusters. Like the seven or so Brenda noted earlier, like data analysis and information technology and others. The sixth tier and the final tier is likely on the job training as working adults figure out all the unique skills relevant to their specific occupation and their specific employer, including how to rise up through the ranks. Next slide. So to operationalize this, all of our work has to originate with research and development. Always checking our understanding against the tiers and the skills engine. We thought it was very important for the board to be engaged early and often in our program design through previews of our research and our findings. This sounds so simple, but trust me, every single step in this easy five-step list takes an incredible amount of teamwork, diligence, curiosity, and sometimes plain old detective work. It is true research and the real sense of research and development. So if programs are Calbright's core offering to California, then this is our product development method. This is the process by which things end up on our product roadmap, so to speak. We take it very seriously. Presentations like Customer Relationship Management and Licensed Vocational Nurse that we brought to the board previously are great examples of the early start of are great examples of the early start of this new format and something you should expect as we move forward. Next slide. The complexity of what we're discussing requires reimagining the structure of our cross collaborative team composition. It's about leveraging expertise inside and outside of the organization. We learned that expertise is essential from all areas and it has to be included in order to be credible in the demand side of the market. This doesn't mean there's twenty people in the room. It simply means that the expertise in the room, especially for these knowledge economy career paths are well rounded. We used to think about having a single employer, but you really can't because employers and the behaviors are very different across industries. Some firms prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion, and some simply don't. We have to partner with those that have the same values and commitment to positively impacting our adult learner population. Again, the principles of equity centered community design inform and guide us here. The team has, uh, the team must be cross functional because the way Brenda thinks about her future is cross functional. She is thinking about what all of us refer to as placement outcomes before she even starts Googling for programs. She starts at the endpoint and then reasons her way backwards from there. So we must do that too. That means every touch point along her learning journey has to be present in the room where it happens. From recruitment into the program, the, to the relevance and utility of the programming content, the interactive informative learning experience itself, the surrounding supports along the way, and ultimately her labor market outcome. Every person, partner, and collaborator responsible for the design of each of these pieces is on the product design team. It makes sense when you stop to think about it. How else could such a complex learning journey be designed? After all, the objectives of Calbright are a bit more complex than traditional colleges, given our legislative mandate and commitment to labor market outcomes. This multi disciplinary, cross functional team approach is not unfamiliar to anyone in the modern product or design industries, collaborative, iterative, agile, replacing the traditional cafeteria style design methods. So we are a design led organization. Thus, we are committed to building product in a design forward way. To be clear, cross functional, collaborative, iterative, design is truly the design forward way. Next slide.
I just wanted to close by talking a little bit more about the team. Uh, as we mentioned, this requires a, a team effort, uh, internal as well as external players. And over the past year, in particular, we've built especially our internal team to include folks like former Apple executives who are on the cutting edge of design and educational support services, gubernatorial appointees who have been solidifying our state, local, and regional efforts. These amazing project managers who are keeping us coordinated and on track. Very rock star counselors who are on the phone texting, video chatting, connecting with students in every way possible. Talented workforce content faculty specialized in areas like career development. And when we have lost key players, it's often because they've been called up by the majors, sometimes former presidents, maybe future presidents. And that's something we can live with, but for us, it doesn't stop there. Our team has expanded to include strategic partners that help us grow and become deeply embedded in these emerging areas. I have actually started to say, um, that we're not, not just trying to build a community college, but the community's college. And what that means is it has to be porous. It has to absorb internal and external expertise, knowledge and skills in service of high quality outcomes for students. And we have to be savvy and ten- and intentional in what we build and how. Next slide. So this is truly frontier land here at Calbright. The next stage of our organizational development, um, has coherence. And, uh, I, I want to thank the board for their vision and foresight in supporting the path forward for the college. All of our work is really held together by creating value for Brenda and students like Brenda, who we are trying to bridge into the knowledge economy. And what we're moving towards is equity centered community design. And what that means is looking through Brenda's eyes and seating Brenda at the head of our table in all our actions and in all our decisions. So we're going to pause there again. I wanted to thank you for sitting through this with us, allowing uh, us to share our vision, but really kind of peek under the hood uh, to see all the considerations and strategies that are involved in operationalizing uh, a workforce driven equity centered design approach. Um, at this time, wanted to open it up for questions and also conclude with a, a feedback discussion. We, um, posted up some potential questions for the, the board to take up, but are also really happy to. Well, there were questions on the slide, also really happy to, to kind of open it up to initial reactions to go deep in any of the areas that we've discussed. Um, and I'll also say, I know this is a tremendous amount to absorb. And the reason that we wanted to put it out there in this fashion was because this is not the only time you're going to be seeing this. Uh, all of our work going forward is going to continue to be anchored into this framework and this way of thinking. And so, um, there will be plenty of opportunities to go deeper in many of the areas in the weeks and months to come. Um, and we're just sort of e- excited to be able to, to share these aspects with you. Um, as we, as we move to the next, uh, phase within our strategic vision and, and towards some of the scaling objectives the board has set out for us.
So thank you so much for that presentation. Um, uh, and, and I really appreciate that the context. We had Brenda and Brenda was at the center of the entire conversation. Um, uh, in, in terms of the, 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 um, the presentation, and that's helpful. It wasn't disjointed, um, relative to that. But I want to open it up for questions from, um, uh, our trustees. So it's a lot to, um, think about because this story hasn't been told from this side. It's been told from the other side.
Yes.
And so, um, and for those of us who, um, are, um, um, embedded within the community college system. Um, I, I think that for many of us, um, the reason why Calvert is exciting and, um, important um, and different is for all of these reasons, but it, the story hasn't been told it holistically. Um, um, from the perspective of who we're serving. Um, because in many cases, we, we may have some ideas about that because some folks have told us this and this and this sporadically, but not holistically. So, um, if there's not, uh, so given this, uh, let me read, let me read some of the questions and then we can go from there. And if, uh, uh, others have questions, that, that'll be fine. So based on what you've read and the presentation today, what stood out to you, um, the most about our workforce strategies moving forward? Uh, I see that, um, uh, trustee Wi- Williams has, uh, hand raised. Joe?
Yeah. Good morning, um, everyone. A lot is going through my mind. Um, I really appreciated the presentation and the storytelling and really just connecting to, uh, Brenda. And, um, it made me think about my son, Joseph. He's twenty five. Um, he had a full ride to university in New Jersey, decided not to complete. Um, and you know, I think that this model fits really well for someone like him. He's an entrepreneur. Um, you know, he has a, a fashion design business, but he doesn't want to sit in a classroom. And he wants to be able to learn on the go and operate his business. But he needs some foundational skills and this kind of model will work for a person like him. And so that was just the thought that was coming to my mind when, um, you know, I was listening to President Haynes speaking, just listening to the presentation. And, um, I just want to see it in action. I just want to take a class. I want to, you know, see what, and I'd be interested in really to hear what, um, because I know a lot of us say like we're, um, because in our, in my school district where I work, we're, we're following this model that's called unincorporating education. And, you know, it's taking the economy, it's taking employers out of the mix. And I'm like, I'm still struggling with, yeah, but we're, we're, we're preparing people to go work for corporations and municipalities and, and different things like that. And so just want to get an understanding of like how you all feel about that part of it. And, um, and then I know, you know, folks are thinking about like the, 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 the gig economy where people will be taken on task and maybe have multiple employers versus just having one. And so just would like to have some more, um, opportunity to be educated about where you all see that going. And, um, but it's exciting. And, um, again, I, I just wanted the opportunity to experience it as a, as a board member, just to deepen my understanding about it, but thank you.
Yes. Um, Pam, I'm, I'm happy to, to make a couple of comments. And Michael, you should feel free to jump in at any time. Um, you, you touched on a few things, Joseph, that I think are important. One is this sort of, um, shift in the realities of how people are learning, both in terms of preference, but also in terms of, um, this, this value proposition in higher education. And I, I actually firmly believe that that's some of what we're seeing in terms of the way that people are walking with their, with their feet in higher education right now. And what, what that emergent kind of data tells us is, is this idea of like, when we are able to listen to those, to those realities, those considerations, what our learners are valuing, we're able to direct the content of what we do, not in an impositional manner, but in, uh, in, in a, in a thoughtful manner and in a way that allows us to communicate the value to students. And our CRM program is actually a good example of that because what we learned, um, is that, uh, in particular, folks did not have an access point in understanding CRM in the context of the opportunities that were out there. And so the, and they didn't necessarily see, um, the connection between, uh, that kind of a program and, and what might be available to them on the job market as a result of it. And so the work that we did to create simple explanation for your entry point into the knowledge economy is like, you can work in tech if you have a smartphone. And here's what we want you to understand about what CRM is and what the opportunities are out there. And it is, um, it is a tru- it is a fundamentally different way of thinking about both our engagement with students, but also very intentionally about the work that we do in understanding aspects of the dot job task changes in the marketplace and where we think that first opportunity set is for a foothold. Um, and to think also beyond that, not just that single foothold, but what, what does it open up, uh, folks for later? And when we've talked about traditional CTE or other programs, we've been very hyper technical folk, technically focused. Um, and we haven't given that range of motion. And that's just not the way that the, the economy and the hiring market has been working. And so I, I will say just, um, you know, an unprovoked, not, not critique, but question I would have about models that completely decouple learning from an understanding of what's happening in our economy is, I'm not sure that it is holding, um, what learners are telling us is the critical need and value they see in educational opportunities. So I, I think whether or not, um, there's an intrusive way in which we do employer partnerships or, but we still have to factor in and consider and understand if the outcome that we're trying to facilitate, facilitate for folks is some type of employment opportunity that, that gives them the greatest range of motion in terms of their future economic security. So I would just sort of say like, we, we still have to know all of those things and we still have to account for them in educational design. If we don't, we are not serving with fidelity what folks are come to, coming to us for on an increasing basis.
I see other hands, um, raised, uh, Jolena, um, and then I think, um, who else is up there? Um, Hildy. And then we have Felicia.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you, Ajita and Michael for the incredible presentation. Uh, much like, um, trustee Williams, uh, was thinking of someone, uh, particularly his son. I was thinking of not only my own mother, but all the students that are attending career education programs in the community colleges that exist currently. And particularly, I'm, I'm thinking of my students right now. Um, we're on spring break and I'm hoping that they're getting some rest and relaxation. However, I understand that for the majority of them, they're not. Uh, in fact, they will work more this week, uh, to make up for the work that they didn't have last week or they won't have next week because they need to make sure that their paycheck can sustain their family obligations as well as their own personal, uh, expenses. But the one thing that I noticed, being a faculty member within the community college system, is there were two terms that I did not hear, and this is not, this is not a criticism. I did not hear guided pathways and I didn't hear anything about the college completion agenda. And both of those things are, uh, front of mind for many of us, uh, along with the vision for success where we're looking at those credentials. I didn't see them as the trajectory, and that's not a criticism because what we're seeing across the United States is a wholesale evaluation of the value of higher education and how it does or does not lead to industry valued credential skills and knowledge. And your presentation showed how Calbright is fundamentally designed on meeting those industry needs. However, it doesn't spend as much time talking about the pathway. How is it that they go into that initial, um, entry level position in CRM or a host of other fields and then project themselves twenty years out into the next level or the next level or the next level? At what point do we anticipate handing them off from the incredible foundation Calbright has provided and passing them into a degree completion program or transfer to a university?
Yeah. So I think I'll, I'll tell you, 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 you packed up a lot of things. The first thing I want to point out is your correct assumption, right? That we don't live in a post credential environment, right? I would love it to be completely skill based hiring and, you know, no credentials required, but that's not where we end. So it, completion as an agenda is implicit in terms of we, the whole idea of competency based education is that the credential that you end, end of, get at the end of it is not just, um, an accomplishment of time. It is actually a demonstration of mastery of those skills required and, and structured in the credential. So, you know, completion for us is, is a marker on the student journey, but it is not the end of the student journey for us. It is, it is in most institutions and, and most of the data collection that we do in higher ed. Um, so fundamental to that is when we think about credentialing, how does it connect to give them the greatest range of motion over time and sequence in future learning that, that might occur, whether it occurs at Calbright or whether it occurs somewhere else. And so the work that we do with colleges like Compton College and Bakersfield, that is actually about thinking about some of that piping. How do we think about actually how these credentials offered here will carry the greatest weight and range of motion into the two year market, but actually also into the four year market? And I just want to say one thing about that and, and i- is that, um, it is my hope and expectation that work that we'll start to do with the CSUs or the UCs begin to open those doors into the four year market for all of us. Now, if not, there are a host of higher education institutions in the four year market that see the potential of our learners to see and be degreed. And so that is, um, we are, we have definitely eyes open. And, and so it is, the idea of this is that we can't have non sequitur career and technical education pathways or non credit or any of that stuff. That there, that any learning that occurs has to be validated. It has to be credentialed in particular ways. And that has to have translation into the broader education market. So this idea of the competency model, for example, why we're saying like, this is not a curricular model. This is a fundamental currency exchange model, and it's important because we have to have through flow between the knowledge and skills we know carry the value for the outcome that our students want, which is a labor market outcome one, and carries an ability to translate that currency back into the educational market for future scaling. This is never going to be a one and done program. This, the whole point of this is to start to facilitate and have the cogs, uh, of the wheels turn a little, gears turn a little smoother for an ability for somebody to move across their lifetime in the continued advancement, advancement of their educational experience, future credentialing, but also their opportunities for growth in terms of their careers.
Can I add something to that, um, please? Because I, I, I was Brenda. And, um, and so if you, if you listen to Brenda's pathway, she is thinking about her family, her time, and what she needs in order to stay afloat, better than afloat. Um, and recognizing over time that this job will give her X number of time, um, and, and all of those things. And, and so to be really honest, I am Brenda. Um, started in a community college. Um, by virtue of a training program that really was only about three and a half weeks, stayed in a job for twenty years that allowed me to buy a home, allowed me to raise my children, allowed me to go back to school and then get a master's degree. Now it took a long time. What I would say is that there are a lot of Brenda's. Brenda will get to a point, she's got two kids who she wants to have, wants to have a great education. She has no car at this point. She will get a car. And so she becomes the anchor of what is possible for her entire family.
Yeah.
And so, um, I, I, I want us to give the Brenda's of the, of the world credit that they can see their future and move into these areas if there are opportunities and pathways to do it. And so we are not discounting and closing off. And so we are not discounting and closing off pathways, because even within that field, there is a pathway to a better job and more training. And so I just want us to keep that in mind. And Jolena, you asked a really, really critical question. One of the things are, we are not empty vessels. We have dreams and aspirations, and we have them for our kids. And so I have a lot of faith in Brenda and all of those other Brenda's out there who are in these situations with, in many cases, not having the option and the flexibility. That's what Calbright is offering in a very different way. So I'm sorry for interrupting, but thank you for that question. So we're going to go to Hildy now.
Thank you very much, Pam. I appreciate that at the very end of your presentation, you provided some questions for the group's discussion. And I saw that a theme in those questions was what resonated with you? And I have a hard time answering that because the entire presentation resonated. It was incredibly powerful and very disruptive in a fantastic way. So I just wanted to start my question off with the comment and congratulations that this was a phenomenal presentation. My mind is turning at 1,000 miles per hour, and I think as we continue to sit and marinate on this information, I'll have a ton more questions. What I wanted to do, though, is to ask you a question that talks about what Jolena touched upon, but earlier than that. There is on the Calbright Skills, no, the slide after the Skills Engine slide, it talks about desk procedures for initial program discovery research. And the first piece is Brenda's occupational filtering. And I feel like that is super important, because you're putting a lot of the work at the front. This is front-loaded work. And then you're able to jump into the guided pathways type of analysis where we're trying to get you through the program quickly. But how are you jumping from Brenda's current occupations of restaurant server and grocery store clerk all the way to IT? Is this an assumption? Are we feeding people this idea already? Or have all of your enrollees already thought about this as the way to go, as evidenced by the majority of our enrollments by program being in IT? How are you bridging that gap for folks? And how are you encouraging people to get that mind shift from something that's very much a grocery store-type worker to a self-starter initiative kind of person who wants to pursue IT?
Yeah. Again, I'll start, and Michael, please feel free to jump in. You know, I will say, the reason that we believe our students are high capability are largely because that is what the experiences told us, right? They are hustling in a very profound way to make life happen. And the complexity of navigation required to do that, what they have to balance, what they have to, you know, these are not, we don't have a victimized view or a less-than view of our students, and that is fundamental. So then we have to think about it from the perspective of what information do we have to know and learn and be able to convey to them that empowers them to have agency in the decisions that they make going forward? So this concept, like the simple thing I say about, look, if you have a smartphone, you can work in tech. That fundamental idea of unlocking something simple and something that is often a shared-use device that they use in other aspects of their lives, that's one way. The other way is like really clear and simple explanations, like nobody knew, you know, and we often have to explain what CRM is, because people are like, is that a call center? And you're like, no, it is actually the set of technologies that is fundamentally transforming the way that humans interact across, you know, across businesses with other businesses and with their customers, right? It is fundamentally a different thing. And so how do you explain what they're seeing and experiencing every day in terms of their interactions with a product, or with banking, or with any of the things that they interact with on a daily basis, and sort of say, like, here's what's under the hood of that, and guess what? There's an access point for you. You already have many of the same, you know, qualifications and skills that are needed to work in industries like this. And you can do it, guess what, from a perspective of systems administration or business analytics, or if you like computers a real lot, and you, you know, we have lots of examples of students who are like, I used to try to build my own, you know, parts of the computer using old Apple, and stuff like that. There's just a ton of ingenuity among the communities we traditionally write off that we forget about. And so our job is to find better and ways to tap into that and to provide what information allows them to see themselves in that particular, you know, set of roles or suite of opportunities. And I will just say, like, a plug for the UC Irvine work that we started talking about in November. This is a prime example for the way in which how we communicate the value of what we're doing in ways that can be tested and resonate with the communities that we're engaging and working with. That becomes, those are all integrative actions on our part that help us get closer to knowing how to do this better for folks.
You touched upon something that was key for me, which is how are we getting folks to see themselves in the work? And by way of a quick example, right, I didn't know that as a Filipina woman, that I could be a federal prosecutor until I met one. And I had already been through a majority of law school by then. I had no idea that was a career option available to me. So I have absolutely no doubt that our folks are high capability. It was more of the, do you see yourself in your work question that I wanted you to touch on, which you absolutely did. And then a quick comment, just to close out my remarks here. There was a use of minoritized in the description for the board meeting materials. I'm wondering if we could transition that to historically excluded. I think Michael actually touched upon something that was very similar to that, but I'd love to see us use different terminology in describing our folks.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Felicia.
Hi there. Thanks so much for the just very well-done presentation, high energy. Very clear that you all have done a lot of work thinking about this, and that the team is really is really just, you know, committed to this model. I think it's very exciting as a way to kind of explain our work, you know, to all kinds of folks that are interested and may have questions about, you know, the model of Calbright. So I think it's going to be very helpful. To me, it's very relevant. I also really just love the idea of, you know, you talked about just now, Ajita, like, these are high-performing individuals. They may not be high-performing in the, you know, traditional academic sense, but they're juggling a lot every day, and they're delivering, right, for their families, for the economy, for their communities. And so I think kind of giving them that credit for the work that they're doing, I think, is really great. I love the idea of kind of the, using the entrepreneurial kind of model, the Skills Engine as well, because I think that really speaks to, you know, the kinds of learners that are going to be engaged in a cowboy, you know, system, right, process, right? They're people who are really, they are hustling, they are trying to get up the economic ladder, and they just need to figure out how to get there. So I really loved the presentation and appreciate all the thought that went into it. I guess the slide that kind of speaks to me is just how do we operationalize this? What's next, right? Because now we got to turn this into action, right? And I know, I'm conscious that we always have folks kind of wondering about the Cowpoint model. And so I'm curious to hear what comes next after all this really incredible thinking. And I know you have a great team of folks that are helping you operationalize it, but I'm just, that's like a big question. I'm sure a lot of people have, but I just wanted to throw it out there to, as you all are preparing. We'd love to know, I'd love to know more.
Yeah, absolutely. And one, I'll start by saying, like, we already started, right? So we were starting to move in this direction with our new program development approaches and things. What we started realizing in the deepening of conversations that we're having at the regional level is that's where we will start to see, like, focusing pilot activities on a regional basis based on those considerations will be one way we operationalize that. And what's funny is when we start with some of the base content that we're talking about, whether it's data analytics, or whether it's entrepreneurship skills in a more formalized setting, or project management, those are all things that also have been emergent needs that have been identified in key regions of the state amongst the economic development tables that are holding these conversations amongst folks on the workforce board side of things, as well as a lot of other folks on the worker organization side. So for us, there's a lot of convergence around what we talk about building next and how the operational deployment happens, and why we place this emphasis on strategic partnership engagement in the design process is because that's how it gets operationalized. And so the next, you know, the next few months, what we continue, what we'll continue to bring to the board are aspects of those programs that are in various stages of development that adhere to this framework and model. And so we kind of wanted to put the framework and model out there so that folks had a context for what we were bringing to them. So the connection between, you know, a pilot program with Vitners in Stockton versus, you know, a local government, county government, employment pipeline in, you know, in the southern part of the state that we're talking to folks about. In both scenarios, perhaps unsurprisingly, there's a coherent theory.
Amy, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Pam. Pam, I really appreciated your comments about your kind of personal journey. And I think for me, you know, this really is a gender equity issue. And I know that when we looked at Calbright, you know, the majority of those have, you know, maybe some course credit, but no degree, are women. I think it's really no surprise that women dropped out of the labor force during the pandemic in record numbers, and that despite all of our progress, you know, things, you know, there is a second shift. Women have the second shift. That's the reality. And I want to quote our Supreme Court nominee, who hopefully will get it. She said to her daughters, "I know it has not been easy, as I tried to navigate the challenges of juggling my career and motherhood. I fully admit, I did not always get the balance right. But I hope you've seen that with hard work, determination, and love, it can be done." This is a woman at Harvard, you know, and I think it just speaks to the fact that, you know, this is really something that, you know, women have to balance. And I believe that Calbright is the model that gives women the flexibility to kind of hold all of those things simultaneously and put themselves on a new trajectory. My question really is, you know, kind of in the broader policy context, these issues of, you know, childcare. I don't view them as women's issues, but I know they impact women. Are you seeing on the student support side, you know, things that we need to do specifically to help women who, like Brenda, have children, and they have a job, and they're trying to spend a lot of place?
Yeah, I'm going to say something that might be unpopular, but it's honest, which is, I don't think an institution of higher education can solve for all the things in the ways that it has to. I think we have to participate in the systemized solution around these things, and that's how we would bulk our time. So in the small Band-Aid ways, we find ways to connect our learners to resources that might be available to them in their communities to stop the bleeding around emergency childcare, for example, right? We do those things. We have programs that we can connect them to, as well as employee assistance programs. But that is not going to be a long-term solution for our ability to shift things for a broad scale of women in this country over time. And so I think it is so important that the perspective that we're representing and the models that we're creating and the flexibilities, frankly, that we are going to need to push the primary way in which models are compensated or incentivized, or any of those things. Like, all of those things we have to push on the policy side to make it work for the communities of learners that we're talking about in the acute way it's affecting women in this moment. That is the movement-building piece of like what our participation needs to look like. So I think like, yes, we will do everything we can in the Band-Aid itself. But two, the other thing is this larger conversation that's servicing around the fact that, like, childcare is not just like a student service, one of many student services, check the box. It is actually a collective action problem that we have to solve, and it has to require additional state subsidy, additional federal, thinking about how the federal dollars are structured. That's particularly true when we talk about low-income women. And I will just say, there is great work happening on the benefit integration side. There is great work happening that we, you know, we can continue to tap into. But the biggest thing I think that we can do is to be active in that conversation right now.
Kevin, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I just want to add to what other people have said to Michael, and certainly to Ajita as well. That was an impressive presentation. I mean, it was laid out very well. You made your case, but it is complex. It's a lot to absorb in a very short amount of time. So I can't even profess to tell you that I could walk into another room right now and kind of repeat what you went through. It would take time to absorb it all, because there's so many layers involved in it. But to Jolena's point, when she asked about the guided pathway, which obviously we talk about with all the community colleges, I look at this as another type of guided pathway. It's not guided pathways that we talk about in community colleges, but for me, as I listen to you, I look at it as a combination of high school counselor, college counselor, and employment counselor all wrapped up in one, because a lot of these ideas would have been good to get in high school. You know, they can talk about, you know, are you thinking about college? Are you thinking about a career? And help you there. It generally doesn't happen that well. In college, it should happen again. But as I'm looking at it, you've combined all of it, and it's remarkable. My question then is, and to Joseph's point, I'm glad to see a real-life example of how Calbright is handling things, because before it's been very theoretical. So it was good for you to make it real and give us some context. I really appreciate that. And Brenda's a real person, right?
She's an archetype. So she's actually an amalgamation of a lot of individual students that we've had.
Okay. What's happened with her?
So we have, you know, we have like the survey data, the market research, that there's a lot of things that went into the creation of who she is.
Okay. Well, two questions. Is it Calbright's goal to treat every one of its students like this? I assume it is. But if so, I mean, how much time are we talking about for each student? And then, secondly, just as to Brenda, as the archetype, how does Brenda compete with other similarly situated people, not identical, but similar, who already have a college degree, either a community college degree or a university degree, who are looking for the same type of job, so that when she presents her resume vis-à-vis Cynthia,
Yep.
who's applying for the same job, but already has a two-year degree or four-year degree, how do we?
Yeah.
How do we help Brenda through that?
This is important, because it has a lot to do with why we're thinking about the choice of destination and where we prioritize our workforce development work, Kevin. The reason that we are worried about just doing the next set of programs totally on the open market and guessing what happens to her in the hiring market is because we can't control aspects of that that we know intentionally select her out, whether it's an applicant tracking system that's screening her out on the degree qualification, or whether it is hiring bias and aspects of the market. So when we talk about who we work with in terms of the intermediaries and the individual firms and the groups on the demand side of the market, we are looking at this acute problem we are having in terms of these skills needs in local state and county government, for example, right? Because that is actually a hiring market where we can partner intervene. And Michael has already done a work that you should talk about in terms of the reentry population in this regard. And the reason that we want to think about it doing it that way, and with employers who are like-minded in terms of their objectives and their sort of willingness to move in a skills-based hiring direction. So when we talk with partners like the Bay Area Council, you know, they convene employers on this side of things that are focused on a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And they know that means that they have to change aspects of their hiring processes. And so we have to look for places in the market that are reliable destinations for us, because the fact is on the open market itself, folks are not viewed as talent in the ways that we all do.
I see.
But Michael, you should just maybe spend two minutes talking about the work that you did at the state before coming over here.
Absolutely, and appreciate the opportunity and the question, remember, Hall. As it relates to the various type of pathways, one of the reasons we wanted to highlight that public sector transition was really that quality marker conversation, that ease of transfer, that value of, you know, past and lived experience as being an asset and transferable, right? It really refers back to, remember, Alonzo's commentary in terms of, you know, an individual with a suite of experiences, and they don't actually know the experiences are valuable in the marketplace. And so a lot of the work I did at the state was standing up these community-based, community-supported, community kind of capacity-building career pathways that 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 drew from philanthropy to government, state services that provided for entry-level, transferable skills for for those who are justice-involved to others that fell, you know, on the poverty line, others that sought out of public services. And so it really prepared them with, one, you know, skills that they didn't know they had, right? And so to your comment, is it going to take more time where if we're establishing parity with everybody that comes through Calbright's virtual doors? And giving them a customization and building within our program design elements that allow us to assess what those lived experiences were and apply them to a job market kind of matrix, if you will, in our Calbright Skills Engine, then then we can then share that information and collect that information for them to better point them in the direction, right? And allow them to be informed and and make that decision kind of for themselves once they have the suite of, hey, these lived experiences, past experiences, transferable skills that are already maintained, here's how we can subsidize them to be a full portfolio and opportunity for the marketplace. So it's a great question.
And the last thing I just want to remind people of, and I continue to, as you imagine, remind folks in Sacramento when I'm having these conversations as well and when Jenny's having these conversations is, we're also like, it gets smarter as we build it, right? So the, that is such an important fundamental startup principle of the Startup Public College for folks to understand, we are not even midway through our seven-year startup window in this regard. And what we're talking about here is that kind of big picture strategy piece, but the operational steps we continue to take today, right? We knew a year ago that the institution folks were walking into were having a hard time making it through the enrollment process and they were having a hard time making it through between enrollment and orientation. And so the student, the thing that students enter now in terms of the experience has actually complete, you know, not completely, but has significantly reduced the triage we see from the application process, which we've done through front-end student support specialists, as well as the piece that they were getting stuck on in terms of what was delaying the completed application into enrollment funnel, right? And now we're talking about the first eight weeks of the experience and the touch points and interventions that happen with students then. So as this thing builds, it gets smarter and better and more precise. And those are the kinds of things that allow us to scale, right? We're not, we don't sink every manual resource into everything for every student in perpetuity, but in the process of learning and curating the high-quality actual thing that we want more, you know, bulk of people to go through. And so that's why this work matters right now in the stage of development that we're in. But we are also doing it not with the spaghetti-on-the-wall strategy, but with very intentionality where we're able to see that continuous improvement cycle on the operational side. So that's a key part about it. And, you know, one conversation I noticed has come up a lot on the technology side of things is, you know, in May, we're hoping to come to the board because we're, right now, our new VP of Engineering has spent a fair amount of time in the first few weeks, has been with us, actually starting to understand and audit our, our, our systems and processes on the technology infrastructure side because the next question for this next phase of what we're doing is going to require us to make sure that we have the right infrastructure from a technology perspective in place to turn the dial to the next level. So all of those things are in the process of building for us that, that we have, you know, a clear direction and destination on where we're heading, but require the time to build it.
I don't see any other hands raised. So I want to close out our study session and say thank you very, very much. It's given us, it's been, it's given us a new perspective, sort of a new angle at which to look at the work that that we are doing relative to Calbright. And I, for one, appreciated, it's got me thinking about my granddaughter, who's definitely an entrepreneur because she picks up all of these jobs. And so she and I need to have a conversation anyway. So we're going to go, we're now going to go into our next item, which actually is closed session. So with that, we're going to now move to closed session. We have one item on the closed session agenda, which is a conference with our labor negotiators. And when we come back out, we'll, we'll figure out if there's any public comment on the item. I think I'm saying that right. Correct me if I'm not, Namita.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you. So for our board members, you go back into, and there's a special link for closed session. See you on the other side. So thank you. We are back from closed session and no actions were taken. So we're now on our consent agenda, which is 4.1. And we have President Minyon who's presenting.
President Haines, it's the consent agenda.
Didn't I say that? I did. This is the consent agenda.
Yes, but no one was presenting.
Oh.
This item.
I'm sorry, I have, I have names under, oh, disregard, we usually present on it, but um, so can I get a motion to approve in a second?
A move, Rollins. Second, plus.
Have a motion and a second, would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo. Joshua. Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haines.
I.
Kevin Hull.
Hi.
Irma Ogwun.
Hi.
Bill Rollings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian. Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Hi.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
I, I, excuse me.
Motion carries, President Haines.
All right, so we'll just call me confused this morning. So did we just, did we just vote on 4.1, 4.2 and 4.3? Because those are all under the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't drink coffee this morning, but I don't usually drink coffee, so I can't even blame it on that. All right.
I'm sorry, this is Felicia Escobar Correo. I'm sorry, did you call my name? I know I wasn't here at the beginning of the roll call, so you may have not known that I'm here. I just want to acknowledge that.
Terry, did you call Felicia's name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I did. I will note.
You might have, I might have missed it, sorry.
No worries, no worries. All right, so we're now into the action item, of which we have three action items. We'll need to vote on each of those as we go through them. That's, that's a note for me. So 5.1 is the Vice President of Learning and Instruction. And we have Joseph Brimgartner, who is our Vice President of Human Resources.
Good morning. I'm pleased to request your approval for the appointment of Dr. Shannon McCarty as our new Vice President of Learning and Instruction. Throughout the screening and interview process, she demonstrated a passion for student success, innovation, learning and teaching. She's been the Vice President of Academic Affairs at Bay Path University, Vice President of Teaching and Learning at National University and has held several leadership roles at Rio Salado College. Dr. McCarthy has also had various roles in strategic academic leadership for programs stemming from undergraduate to doctoral programs. And she has managed a broad spectrum of areas, including curriculum accreditation, grants and funding, instructional research, instructional design, research and development, and leading teaching and learning teams. Dr. McCarty holds a Bachelor's of Science in Biology, a Master's in Educational Leadership and a Doctor's in Adult Education. And so we're happy to bring her forward today for your consideration.
Do we have any questions or comments on this item? From the board? Seeing no hands raised, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haines.
Well, then let me, before I get a roll call vote, let me just say that I, and I'm sure others on the board read the resume of this particular candidate and by far an exemplary career and experience is coming to this board. So with that, I would ask for a motion in a second to approve.
Aguinaldo, I'll move.
Second, Williams.
Williams, we have a motion and a second for approval. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haines.
I.
Kevin Hull.
Hi.
Irma Ogwun.
I.
Bill Rollings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian.
Yep.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
I.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
I.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you so much. Our next item is the Triple CT Board election. Before there's discussion, if any, on this item, I just want to point out that this item is strictly an approval to give the Executive Committee authority to select candidates for election to the Triple CT Board on behalf of Calbright College's Board of Trustees. The discussion about the candidates will take place at that particular meeting. So if there's any interest by other board members, you're, you're welcome to come in and listen to the discussion. Everyone received the candidate's information, their answers to the questionnaire. So that information is available. And if you didn't, we will make certain, staff will make certain that you get it. The Executive Committee is scheduled to meet as it does in April. The meeting date is April the 20th. And so I would ask if, just in terms of clarifications or comments, do we have any questions from our trustees? I don't, I don't see, I don't see any. Okay, good. Is there any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there's no public comment on this item.
All right, then we're going to go to a motion and a second to approve.
Tarasova moves.
Move approval.
Tarasova moves and Williams seconds. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua Elizondo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haines.
I.
Kevin Hull.
Hi.
Irma Ogwun.
I.
Bill Rollings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian.
Yep.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Yes.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
I.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you so much. So we're now moving to item 5.3, which is the resolution to adopt procurement card program, the procurement card program manual and to authorize the issuance of a Cal card to Calbright's Chief Financial Officer. And we have Carmen Drummond, who is going to be presenting on the item.
Good morning, President Haines, Vice President Costa and trustees of the board. Today I present to you Resolution Number 2022-06 for your approval, which would approve Calbright's procurement card manual and provide the authority to the President and CEO and/or a designated to amend the manual as necessary, as well as authorize the issuance of the Cal card to Calbright's Chief Financial Officer. I'll start by providing a little bit of background to the board on this item. So as some of you may know, at the June 17th, 2020 board meeting, the Board of Trustees Executive Committee directed Calbright to develop policies and training associated with the use of credit cards for procurement purposes. Calbright followed up to this directive in two steps, the first of which was on September 20th, 2021, at the Board of Trustees meeting, where the board adopted Resolution Number 2021-06, authorizing the issuance of a Cal card to Calbright's Chief Financial and Administrative Officer, that we could maintain the continuity of operations after the departure of our CTO, Chief Technology Officer at the time, who was at the time the sole Cal card holder. The second step, on October 20th, 2021, Calbright brought forward Resolution 2021-08, where the Board of Trustees Executive Committee approved Calbright's procurement card manual and authorized the issuance of Cal cards to six key executive or six key team members, which have included the President and CEO, Chief of Staff, Chief Product Officer, our Vice President of External Affairs, Marketing and Communication, our Vice President of HR and Board Liaison. The procurement card manual, as you may recall, governs the use of Cal cards for purchasing and use of travel for Calbright Business on, on behalf of Calbright. And it also puts in place additional appropriate safeguards and compliance with applicable laws, regulations, policies, procedures and best practices. Since the procurement card manual was approved by the board at the October 20, 2021 meeting, the manual has been updated to reflect revised internal procedures. And we've updated references to the Chief Financial Officer rather than our Chief Financial Administrative Officer. So as part of this, what we'll do is we'll continue to provide training to all of the employees. But today just ask that you approve this resolution again so that we can grant the authority to the President and CEO to continue to make and amend changes to this manual and authorize the issuance of a Cal card to our Chief Financial Officer. Myself and Calbright's Chief Financial Officer are available if you have any questions today.
So thank you. Is there, are there any questions from our board members? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, then is there any public comment on this issue?
President Haines, there is no public comment on this item.
All right, thank you. Then can I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved.
So.
So we, we had Epstein move, and I'm sorry, who was the second?
Viola Bos.
Viola Bos, thank you. Second, would you call the roll, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Joshua, I'm sorry, Elizondo.
Don't worry.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haines.
I.
Kevin Hull.
Hi.
Irma Ogwun.
I.
Bill Rollings.
Hi.
Roy Shabazian.
Yep.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
I.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
I.
Motion carries, President Haines, and I need to voice some public comments on item 4.1, in reference to item 4.2. item 4.3, in reference to item 4.2.
Okay. All right, they're in, they're in writing?
Correct.
Okay.
What is Calbright doing to resolve and correct the severe mistreatment of the current and past employees? Who are the foundation to provide students with a promising future? For example, the toxic work environment, employees being wrongfully terminated or forced to resign. They are left without a job, without income in the physical, and mental impact is severe and traumatizing. The second one is how does Calbright expect for students to be accommodated when their employees are being severely mistreated? How can the employees do their job with these constant distractions? They are unethical, abusive and very harmful. You, I, to all.
Thank you, those, that completes the comments.
Yes, for item 4.2.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move along. We're now into information and reports. 6.1 is reports on contracts and purchases. And we have Akor Vara Darajan, who will be presenting on this item, our interim CFO.
Good morning, President and Vice President and Board of Trustees. Board Policy 616330 required that the Board of Trustees be informed of all contracts and purchases made by the college. Board Policy 6100 provides authority to the CEO up to $100,000 to approve contracts. It also says that all the contracts and purchases must be brought before the board. In accordance with these policies, attached is a list of contracts that have been executed in February.
Are there any questions on any of the contracts that you'd like to comment on or ask a question about? Board members? I do not see any, this is, this is not an action item, it's just for information. Is there any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there is no public comment on this item.
Very good. Then we we are going to move down to 7.1, which there appears to be no report from our Academic Senate. But at 7.2, that's the Calbright Faculty Association. We have Ash Ashley Odell, who has a a report.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, hello, President Haines, Vice President Costa and members of board. I'm happy to provide a report today on the activities of the Calbright Faculty Association. First of all, we have a leadership. Our VP and Bargaining Co-Chair unfortunately has had to depart, which is a big loss. But I am very happy to share that Denise Tamal, who is one of our counselors, has been selected as Vice President. I'm also excited to report that Velvet Miskione, our new counselor, who's who just began here at Calbright, has taken immediate initiative to get involved with the CFA by joining the bargaining team to fill the vacancy left by the departure of the co-chair. She's dedicated to working with an interest based bargaining model to support the progress towards our initial contract, which is a great segue to an update regarding the bargaining process. There's been several productive and collaborative meetings, and we're heading in a positive direction where there has been significant movement on drafting language around workday, workweek, work year and workload. And we're also brainstorming draft language around salary placement and salary advancement, as well as a grievance process. Well, we will explore founding approach in the tenants of just cause and due process. And this is exciting movement of actually getting language down on the page. So we are feeling like there's some great momentum going on and are only expect it to be even better, given that we are now an additional member or a replacement member of the bargaining team. So I'm excited to report that, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for that report. Excuse me. We are now down to the public forum, and are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
President Haines, there is no raised hands and no comments.
Then we are now down to the adjournment, and the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete. And we can now adjourn, and I want to thank my colleagues on the board for hanging in there. This, I know this is a, this is the second day, and so thank you so much. Not only your presence, but your questions and your comments. So I'll see you, I'll see you soon, I'm certain. Have a wonderful day.